All right. Good evening and welcome to the June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Wilmington School Committee. We are back from an executive session. First item of business, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think because we've got some non-common consent items, we'll take these individually if that's okay with everybody. Approval of minutes, June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Ragsdale. All those in favor? And one abstention. Thank you. Second reading of the Wilmington High School Student Handbook. Do I have a motion? Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Samaha. All those in favor? Unanimous. Second reading of the Wilmington Middle School Student Handbook. Do I have a motion? Dr. Bryson, second by Mr. Ragsdale. All those in favor? Unanimous. And disposal of furniture at the Shawshine Elementary School. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha, second. Mr. Turner, all those in favor? Unanimous. Disposal for credit of food services equipment. Do I have a motion? Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Ragsdale. All those in favor? Unanimous. And warrants G thirty-nine and forty, R seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, L one-twelve, one-thirteen, one-fourteen, one-fifteen, FS seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, CB thirty-four, special education sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, and payroll six nineteen, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Samaha, thank you, second. Mr. Golden, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Moving right along, superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Just one item tonight to draw your attention to in that of our communities regarding CARE Solus. In the packet, there is a memo from Ms. Murray, Christine Murray, Coordinator of Behavioral Health and Social Emotional Support. And as you'll know, we're really, we're really quite excited as a district to continue to try and provide additional support and services for, for our students and for our families. Some will recall that back, coming out of the pandemic, one of the commitments that we recognized is that of many other districts is that there would be a need to try and provide different pillars of support for families and students. And so we introduced, we shared with you, the committee at the time, the CARE Solus partnership that we're a part of. And pleased to be able to share with the community on behalf of Ms. Murray that we're expanding through our CARE Solus partnership, the additional ability for families to access resources. To this point in time, there's been really a centering around mental health care, substance use treatment, and coordination of services and the like. But now this is expanding into social services through the CARE Solus partnership program. And those types of social services include food assistance, the ability for families and such to access food pantries, home delivery meal programs, and government nonprofit programs, shelter support for families that may be seeking transitional housing shelters and housing programs, and community health services. And so we're really excited to be able to provide an additional level and layer of support for families. This memo has gone out, has gone out, I think, to families and just wanted to use this opportunity to share this with our community. The, the level of, of which we can talk about perhaps in the new year, but the level of families and those that are using this program is growing, which is unfortunate reality, but also, I think, a good thing in terms of being able to provide this level of support for families. So just wanted to take this opportunity to draw attention to that. And unless there are questions on that, that's it for me for tonight.
Thank you. Questions?
Just, just the comment. I think it's great that this is being offered to the broader community and everything like that. So thank you for doing this.
Mr. Turner.
One quick one. In notes of it, you know, you can call and discuss in multiple languages. And you also mentioned that the flyer went out. Was the flyer in, you know, multiple languages as well? Or part of, part of what I want to just make sure of is this is a very good program, a very important program. Getting it to people and getting it to people regularly so they know it's available to them so that if they have the need, they do access is, is almost, is ongoing.
It's a great question. Can you speak to that, Jason?
I didn't go rush the Office of Students' Support Services to push. And I believe they had the flyer translated into at least three primary languages beyond, you know, other than English, we are in primary languages that I spoke in. Those were highlighted in the district newsletter as well as some kind of other informational packets from CARE Solus and for Students' Support Services.
One of the things that I think just not directly related to CARE Solus, but directly related to your question is we are, I would say that broadly speaking across the district now, there's a, the reaction for putting together communication is to use Canva, right? Smore, sorry, not Canva, Smore, which really is the best tool that we're currently using right now to be able to provide that translation of documents. So we may not be perfect across the board, but we see the communication that's going on from schools. There's a definite level of, there's a mindfulness and awareness of thinking about this. So I'm certain that there was some degree of effort to provide translations.
Thank you. Mr. Ragsdale.
When I first saw this item on the agenda, I was both happy to see it and then also had a little kind of like, oh, yeah, we have this available as a resource to our community. And that also then made me kind of think that, but people can only take advantage of it if they know that it's available. And just something for us to think about to make sure that, that we're regularly communicating and socializing these types of opportunities to get this type, this type of service and care.
OIT added that for school messenger. So every time we do send out messages, you get something in English that's in the district newsletter. Someone who speaks Khmer is getting it in their language. And then they click through to Smore and Smore is translatable into ninety-nine languages.
Yeah. And that, and I'm not talking though about the language issue specifically, but just about putting, putting out the availability of the service in the first place so that all of our families are aware of it.
Yeah. And again, the numbers aren't here, but I had the opportunity to take a look at the numbers and I was surprised, but pleasantly, again, with the level of activity that's clearly happening for families accessing it.
A question, maybe a comment, I'm not sure, but a thought for maybe in the future. I wonder if, you know, knowing that this is sort of shared with the community, the Wilmington Public Schools community, but I wonder if, or do we know if a family, maybe that their kids have graduated or aren't school age yet, reaches out and there are other folks in this community who could benefit from similar resources? Do we have the, I don't know, ability to point them in the right direction? Or is there, do we know if there's an equivalent town? I can't think of the word. Resource. I mean, I know the state offers some resources, but just something to think about that, you know, this is certainly for Wilmington Public Schools community, but
Right, right.
for the larger community as a whole. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, item number five, public comment. There is no public comment. Item number six, we'll move on to old business. You'll recall that at our last meeting, one of our agenda items was Dr. Brand's evaluation. I think, hopefully I can speak for everybody. We had a really, a really good conversation. There were one or two comments that the committee felt they wanted to see changed, updated, addressed in Dr. Brand's evaluation. And so the subcommittee met over the course of the past two weeks and made some changes to language based on feedback we got in the meeting. That document was then shared with the committee and has been updated to reflect those, those comments. So I will give the committee a chance if there's anybody that wants to say anything or has any other questions about the process, but if not, we do need to formally approve Dr. Brand's evaluation. Okay. Is there a motion? Mr. Turner?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Mr. Samaha? Is there any discussion? Mr. Ragsdale?
I just want to very quickly reiterate, because it was two weeks ago, that, you know, I think the committee's evaluation demonstrates that we are very pleased and satisfied with the work that Dr. Brand is doing in our district. And I want to thank you for the time and energy that, that is reflected in the evaluation and that we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you very much. All said. Mr. Turner?
Other than seconding what Mr. Ragsdale said, I do want to also thank the subcommittee for all the time and effort involved in compiling this. So thank you very much for your effort on that as well.
Very good. With that, all those in favor of approving Dr. Brand's evaluation? Is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you. Moving along to new business. First item is the MSBA Wildwood update. Dr. Brand?
Sure. A couple of things regarding the project that's ongoing. Just draw attention to some things first and then speak to the memo that's in the packet tonight. The committee, the building committee met last evening. We had a handful of additional folks beyond committee members in attendance. We held the meeting virtually. You recall that the decision was made to shift the summer meetings to virtual for the simple fact that we are recognizing that we're in summer recess and attracting people's attention and, and their, their presence may have been more of a challenge. So we decided to shift the meetings to remote. I think that was the right decision, given the time of the year. Last, last night's meeting was July twenty-third and as mentioned, the next meeting, or I'll mention that the next meeting is coming up July twenty-third, sorry, most recent last night. We are moving forward to a key decision with the committee that right now is scheduled for August the twentieth. And that decision is the, the need for the building committee to take the project from a number of options right now, a handful of options to one. That timeline has been set by the Massachusetts School Building Authority in our agreement with them. So it's, it's a pretty hard and fast date that we need to work towards. We have a community forum that is scheduled for August the seventh. Again, we recognize that it's the summer and so the decision has also been made to support this forum through virtual access. We've had a lot of success with this previously. The last forum, I think it was the last forum, we had close to ninety people in attendance from the community. So there's no question about the ability of the community to join in and, and be a part of these meetings if, if they so choose. As with all of the meetings, they continue to be recorded. We will continue to work to push out the, all of the information that we're working hard again to compile on, on the website. I'll shift to the memo that is in the packet that you have a copy of. This memo came about, just a quick context. The Massachusetts School Building Authority contacted the owner's project manager as well as the town for further information regarding costs and cost estimates for the project. And in short, what caught their attention is a variation, if you will, in the original cost estimates for possible school buildings as a part of this project from when originally the town put out a, a request for services from an owner's project managers to more recently. So the, the memo draws attention to that. And in short, a simple way of saying is the MSBA just wants to make sure that whatever project is chosen, whatever option is chosen, the town has the financial ability to support the payment for that project. We're not getting into the details yet of what the reimbursement rate is or anything of that sort, but they just needed to make sure that the town is on board with that from a financial standpoint. As the memo speaks to it, the financial capacity is there to be able to support even the most costly item currently on the table right now that's being considered, and that is a pre-K to five. So I'll pause there. If you, if you have any questions, this is a memo that has been respectively shared with at least the select board and certainly the MSBA. And I just wanted to have the opportunity to provide you with an update on that. So, thank you, Dr. Brand.
Questions? Comments? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. We are going to hold off on item B, the MTSS presentation. That brings us to item C, Mr. Lord and the technology plan. Steve and Ken?
Thank you. So I've sent around and have the technology plan that we created with the Technology Plan Committee. First off, I wanted to thank the members of the committee, which are shown here on the screen. We had a lot of input and feedback, not only from committee members, but several surveys we did. And they helped shape the, the plan we have. I should also thank my own staff, my network administrator, assistant administrator, all the technicians, everybody that works hard to make all these things happen on a daily basis. It's very important to acknowledge them. The tech plan is separated into multiple sections and we created some action items. I'll just kind of briefly go through them. Feel free to stop me if you have questions, but I think individually. We have certainly increased our focus on cybersecurity the last several years. There have been numerous, numerous cities and towns and schools around us who have been attacked. Lowell, for instance, they had to close school for a few days. So working hard with the town IT director, with resources in the state. We've done a lot of work, but one of the goals is to annually do a cybersecurity audit. We did one this year through MIT. We also did some scanning through the North Shore Tech Directors Organization, which all are very helpful. We want to expand our cybersecurity training. To date, we've really only offered it as a, an option for people to take. So, so we want to find a way to squeeze more cybersecurity training for the staff, which always comes down to time available for our PD. And we do want to expand our cybersecurity training to students and give them more information about cybersecurity threats. And, you know, I can also see that spawning some interest in the cybersecurity field for students. This summer, a major project we'll be undertaking is deploying an MDR, which stands for Managed Detection and Response System. So currently we have a SOFOs antivirus system that we have to manage. So we are the ones that looking at log files, responding to events. A managed detection and response, in this case, we're moving to CrowdStrike. We actually have a part of our subscription, a team of experts that are monitoring our systems for us, and they'll take proactive actions, seven by twenty-four. So if something happens on Friday night, somebody has laptop at home, they'll be able to react very quickly, quarantine the device, notify us, take action. That's a huge benefit for us. We do have a system of maintaining, patching and updating our, our systems and network hardware, but we want to make sure that that's kept in the forefront. It's something that's easily gets pushed off if you don't keep a focus on it because patching is time consuming, it requires downtime for servers. And sometimes a new patch will actually cause problems because of compatibility and other issues. So it's something we want to keep a hard focus on and make sure we continue to maintain that. A lot of the technology plan is for infrastructure items. So we want to make sure we maintain our system of monitoring our, testing our backups. So we have numerous systems that back up the various systems that we use and no backup system is of value unless you regularly test it to make sure it's working. So we have a system in place, but we want to continue to focus on that. Many of the next items are things that are in the five-year capital plan. So the PA systems in the high school and the middle school. This summer, we're replacing the wireless network at the high school. The network switches were planned for this summer, but there's been some delays with the hardware, getting that in. So it's probably going to be a fall project. We've had a, a project on the books for a few years to upgrade and replace security cameras in the district. So right now, the high school has quite a few security cameras, the middle school less so, and the elementary is very few. Expanding those. And also, a lot of these technology plan items in the capital plan will be adjusted based upon what a project in the MSBA will, will be because we'll shift things from the other side of town and things like that. We have, we don't have a lot of servers in-house. We've moved most everything we can to the cloud, but we do have some data center servers and Genetek is our security camera system. We keep that in-house. So those have a, a replacement schedule on the capital plan. And other items. So one of the big items of discussion that the committee had was our Chromebook one-to-one program, our Bring Your Own Device program and how that is working. We are somewhat in the minority of having a Bring Your Own Device instead of providing a device to staff, to students. So the question is, is whether or not we want to, well, the question is to review all of our policies and procedures, see if they're really fitting what we're doing. Look at our daily loaner program, our long-term loaner program. Can we move to an enhanced content filtering subscription that would be on the students' devices? And also allow for some classroom management tools? But those things would really require us to migrate to a provided device. About twenty percent of our students, more heavily weighted to the, the middle school, take a long-term loaner. So eighty percent of the students are providing their own device. And so while we do put a management license on those, they don't all participate in that. And that management license is something that's necessary to use more classroom management and content filtering and things like that. And because they're their own device, we can't force them to do those things. Some other issues with our Bring Your Own Device program is that the parents that provide their own device, we can't require them to do certain repairs. Like, so if their battery isn't great, we can't require them to replace it. We provide loaners, we provide support. But we do have a sort of a phenomena happening in the middle school, up into the high school, where the kid enters the middle school and they're getting a hand-me-down device from an older sibling that, of course, is not as up to snuff as a newer one. So those ones are more subject to issues and problems and charging issues and things like that. So there's, this needs to be some committees put together to discuss and review those, those policies and procedures that we have in place. We're working and we're doing a big expansion this summer on our elementary Chromebook carts. So we're getting closer to a one-to-one ratio at the elementary schools. This is in large part to help support the new ELA program. We're, we're pushing out touchscreen Chromebooks at the elementary schools to the carts. And we've also been able to use some grant money to supply pre-K and K with iPads. We'll be deploying about a hundred iPads this summer for those students rather than have them try to use a Chromebook. In the tech plan, we also talk about we're going to be moving to a clever, it's a brand name, clever, login system for the Chromebooks where the students at the elementary schools will have a QR code that they show to the camera and that will log them in with their username and password. Imagine trying to get a twenty-plus first graders to type in their username and password. There goes the whole class. So this will greatly enhance their ability to log in to Google, which will allow other things to work more easily rather than using guest and not be able to log into certain things and things like that. So we'll be rolling that out in the fall. We're also in the middle of upgrading, or just starting, I should say, upgrading our Chromebook carts. So in addition to the carts we have at the elementary schools, there are three carts each at the high school, middle school for day loaners, plus our long-term loaners. So we have in the five-year capital plan a replacement schedule to keep those up to snuff. Google has extended their licensing to permit a Chromebook to be licensed for ten years, which allows you to get all the updates. It's unlikely a device will last ten years, but that used to be the big problem is, is once they got to a certain age, you couldn't update them, they didn't have the latest version of the OS, they couldn't be used for MCAS, they had compatibility problems. So they've expanded that to help us out too. In the fall, we'll look with, work with some pre-K and K teachers to start to pick out some apps for the iPads. We've got a certain bevy of certain ones. We'll push out the start and we'll have them, you know, work on which apps they want to, to be able to do that pre-K and K deployments. Continuing on with the hardware plan and our, and our plan, we also replace laptops and desktops and computer labs. There's still a few more projectors out in the elementary schools that have to be replaced. And then we also want to start looking at our ability to migrate to interactive display panels rather than projectors. So an interactive display panel is basically a large TV that's a touchscreen. They offer quite a bit more functionality than an interactive projector. They also don't suffer from bulb life and things like that, but they take up that real estate on the teacher wall. So a lot of our elementary schools in particular, they really have one whiteboard. Now, there are whiteboard tools within an interactive panel, but that, you know, is a real paradigm shift for that teacher to move to those. We did deploy eight clear touch interactive display panels for the Wildwood at the middle school and some at the West. This allows the, for a lower device than the whiteboard and the projector that was in those middle school rooms. And they love the devices. They have a built-in computer to them so they can connect their laptop or use the built-in Android operating system. They're touchscreen, the kids can use them, so they're, they're working very well with them. Increased access to color printing and duplication. Color printing and duplication is quite expensive. So right now, we really only have one access to a color copier in the district. And other than that, they're using color laser printers, which are quite expensive to print. A big part of that is finding, you know, the operation money to fund toner for these printers. That's, the printer itself isn't the issue, it's the toner and the upkeep that is, you know, a simple color laser printer can take, you know, four or five hundred dollars with a toner for one complete change. That's quite expensive. But working to find ways to find more accessible and easy use printing for that, that purchase, that process. The MSBA project will be a big impact on technology. We want to continue to monitor and work with the planning for the MSBA project and, and also mirroring what we're doing, the MSBA project on the other side of town, working to adjust our capital plan once a project has been approved so that we're taking some things off the capital plan that would happen in the MSBA project and also adjusting some priorities. Should a pre-K to five elementary school be selected? We're recommending that an additional elementary instructional technology specialist be hired. These are curriculum technology coaches that work with the teachers to integrate technology. A new building would, of course, have, you know, much more technology. And then right now, we only have one elementary staff member covering all six elementaries. It'd be better to have one at the new building and one covering the other buildings to help the staff. We do have a technology specialist at the high school and the middle school covering those buildings. Policies. There are several technology policies in the policy manual. We want to work with the policy committee to get those updated over the next few years. Professional development is always a, a focus of ours. So we want to expand our professional technology developments offering for staff. That was a lot of the staff survey, talked about needs that they wanted to have and exploring some more options for self-paced courses that they could sign up for and have access to. Lot of software items in our technology plan. A big focus of tech, of software is student data privacy. For every piece of software that stores student personal identifiable information, we need to have a data privacy agreement with that company. So we participate in the Tech Data Alliance, which is the, is an alliance of schools in Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Vermont, New York, that they have a team, a legal team that negotiates these contracts for us and then we just subscribe to them. It's an ongoing process to maintain renewals and make sure that new things have data privacy agreements. So we have a process with teachers. If they have something new, they notify me. I can often sign on to an existing agreement or request a new one be, be sought. Through the parent survey, there was some questions about parent access and how they use Aspen and Google Classroom to monitor their students' work. It's often, you know, a big, we always often talk about the difference between the fifth grade and the sixth grade for the students. It's also a big leap for the parents to now, instead of having one teacher with maybe a newsletter and a standards-based report card to now several classes and it's Google Classroom and monitoring their student. And of course, the students at that age are starting to become more responsible on their own and all that sort of stuff. So we really want to do another examinization of, of these two products. Are they doing everything we want them to do? Isn't a matter of training? Do we need to adjust or look at different products? And bring together some people to talk about that and make sure we're on the right track. We also want to monitor the, of course, the explosion of AI, artificial intelligence. So generative AI tools, of course, have changed a lot of software that we're using. Unfortunately, a lot of the new things like ChatGPT and things like that, there are no student data privacy agreements for them. These tools inherently track what you're doing to learn and go forward. So a lot of the tools we're not able to use right off the bat, it's starting to change. The industry's catching up. Different tools are giving us access to data privacy agreements, so we continue to do that. So we really need to continue to monitor and plan for those impacts. We did work with instructional technology specialists, myself, to create a generative AI guidelines for teachers, which gives them information of how best to use them, what they're best used for, and to really leverage our existing policies such as plagiarism policies and educate the students. So we're working in the flex blocks and, and activity blocks to give information to the students, to educate them about what the, what they can and can't use with AI and teachers as well. So we have a host of software subscriptions that we subscribe to. So we want to do another review of all the subscriptions that we have, make sure that they're filling the need, that we're doing the right thing, getting the most bang for our buck. So we want to periodically review those. And it's been a longstanding project that keeps getting pushed off a little bit to get an electronic document management system to store some of the paper that's in filing cabinets and things. We've got a plan to kind of coincide with a new, well, it's a little after now, but adjust it more to be with a new town hall school admin building to try to get it coordinated with that. STEM will be a focus over the next several years for our technology plan. Not only in a new building would there be a STEM classroom that needs technology and integration, but that sort of activity would also be mimicked on the west side of the town. So we want to work with the curriculum teams to make sure that we're providing the hardware and software that they need for those. We also want to work with our high school and middle school staff to upgrade and make sure their replacement of their STEM hardware is on our capital plan, making sure they're getting the equipment that they need. We also have our Students' Support Services. There's a, so a lot of students have one-on-one devices, mostly iPads. So we want to do another audit of our technology, make sure that we're all on the right schedule for replacing those, maintaining those, and continue to work with that department. There's a lot to do there. Um, and continue to work with that department, there's a lot to do there. And that's about all the action plans I just zoomed through, so. Sure, you might have questions, but.
Thank you, Mr. Lord.
A lot there.
Questions, Mr. Turner.
First of all, thank you very much, I appreciate the thoroughness, I appreciate all the folks that worked on the the plan. I I look, it's clear a lot of time and effort went into this and and the 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 longstanding review process, I really appreciate. Um, uh, three different areas, one is is to go back to the topic of AI. Um, I certainly, I I agree with all of what you said. My biggest concern by far, and I'm I mean this just as as the general public and everyone is engaging with this topic. The risk of student data leaking through a staff member or a teacher or any anyone within the the district. To your point, everything is trained on, and so as soon as a piece of data is out there, it could be reproduced in anyone else's response to a prompt they put into the the same systems. And so the concern on data going out in any way from any of those things is is just, it's it i- it is a very strong concern for me. And I I imagine for you as well, so I I um, the training for staff for how they use. From my perspective, I I think the staff are all aware of the risks, especially at the high school level for students using it. Um, and certainly something they need to be engaged with, but for me, the 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 professional development and training and guidelines to your you point there. Is is I think really critical because I would be problematic on on such a high level for us to have a a data.
Those same issues exist with all of our online subscription software, it's just more of a focus on the AI tools because those are by definition learning tools, you know, it's a learning machine.
A large language, yeah, for sure. Um, two other things, one um is as much for you as Ms. Elliott, actually, I have a general concern about. Um, the being very, very intentional with technology at the youngest grades, pre K all the way through five. On one hand, technology as an enabler, I think is fantastic. Um, but having kids get a lot of screen time out of school, having time in school without, I think is super help, very, very helpful to their development and all the educational benefits. So being really thoughtful about how we're using the iPads, I think is great, but when and how and all within the curriculum to support the learning. And then certainly as you go higher up into into the writing, the the process of handwriting is so critical for so much learning. Um, and I and and the number of amount of time children spend all the way through high school, certainly, and we do as adults, on our computers typing. Um, I mean even using Google Docs, which has auto spell check, should we disable that as a technology? I I'm not sure we want our fourth and fifth graders to have spell check.
It's built into the Chrome web browser, so it appears in everything.
Exactly, so being intentional about technology at those younger grades is is really something I I I know it's something you guys are aware of, but it's it's something that really catches my eye and and I I have concerns about. And the learning of handwriting that comes with handwriting, I feel like I I've seen in some places where the district, all they use for elementary is Chromebooks. So we're we're losing something in the learning process there and there's and my understanding is there's a great deal of research on the value of handwriting to to learning. And then the last piece is in terms of software items, one of the things that's particularly come up and we've talked about it here at least last year. Was the need for a different way to handle all of the information around field trips and sports. And and that type of information where we do paper forms and we're churning a ton of paper that people then have to deal with and teachers have to deal with. Having a form where you enter it all at the beginning of the year and then check halfway through the year, I'm going on a field trip, is the information up to date? Yes, and you're done and and the teacher automatically gets it. And the other side of that software that was a really important point that was raised to me this past year is. With field trips, we currently have teachers collecting money. And sometimes that's hundreds of dollars, sometimes it's thousands, there was one field trip this year where it was tens of thousands of dollars in over seven hundred payments. I don't think that's a great use of their time, I don't think it's very efficient. And so I would hope that any system we might have that encompassed forums would also encompass my, this is my right form. And obviously you have the ability to do handle payments that aren't electronic, but most families, many families would go with an electronic payment method in that sort of technology. So as either as we're reviewing Aspen and Google, it could be part of that replacement, but it I would almost hope it wouldn't wait that long. Um, I think it'll help in going all the way to athletics as well.
So athletics uses, I'm trying to blank on the name of the software they use.
Family ID?
Family ID, that has some payment and and features to it. We uh launched online parent register, student student registration this past uh spring. That system also has some capability to do field trip forms and other things, so we positioned ourselves with some tools that interact with Aspen and other tools to be able to start collecting those things. But that's a um a good focus we can look at. Um, any kind of electronic payment system, we do have to have something that's approved by the town and that's, there are specific requirements to that that make it not so easy.
Fair, I I do, I would hope that any of those technologies we pursue really does keep that at the forefront of it. Because the just just in in terms of what we want our teachers to be spending their time doing, that seems really low on the list. Um, and and again, it 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 does range, I mean, if you if you're running a small field trip to where you're going to something across town, the cost is fairly low, but some of these other things are are pretty significant. And and so if we could incorporate that, I think it would be beneficial, I I I could list a lot of ways that would be beneficial, so, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, uh Mike and then Jay?
Yep, sure, thanks, uh, just one question, so uh first off, I thought it was a really good plan, uh very comprehensive, you know. Clearly a lot of thought and insight went into that, so thank you. Um, I wanted to touch on the Chromebooks and uh definitely agree with a lot of what you said about the bring your own device being having a lot of headaches. Is there an estimate or ballpark figure on how much it would cost?
Somewhere, well, so right now about twenty percent of our students at the high school, middle school, um, we're providing a device already.
Yeah.
So the rest of them would be somewhere between two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars if you bought them in one shot.
Yeah.
Um, and that's something you'd have to refresh every few years as well.
Yeah.
You probably would do it all in one chunk, but that's kind of the 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 deployment you'd be looking at to do that.
Yeah.
Whole group. Um, and then that, of course, if you go on that road, there's also a lot of policy and things that have to go with it, but that's what it kind of costs.
Okay, so if let's say we wanted to pursue that, there would have to be an upfront cost of around two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars and then.
Probably, you'd probably do it over a couple of years and maybe you do the middle school first and then some other.
Gotcha, so.
Kind of, you'd fe- fees, fees, you'd you'd phase it in.
Okay.
But that also has to take a spot in the capital plan.
Yeah.
Which if you look at that capital plan is quite heavy the next few years as we pushed a few items off with the Wildwood and other stuff, so it's got to fit in there as well.
So if that gets kind of phased in, you're looking at maybe somewhere around like fifty thousand a year at the high end or something like that.
Right now, we have in the ca- just on replacement of Chromebooks is seventy five thousand dollars a year in the capital plan, so that's replacing the existing ones that we have, so it'll be on top of that as well.
Yeah, okay, alright, cool, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, Jay.
Um, uh, a couple of things, uh, the first thing, um, the interactive display panels are really awesome, so. I I have one in my classroom and it's like, it's awesome. Um, the um, you mentioned the uh the wireless network and switches placement at the high school may have to shift to the fall. Is that going to impact um the operation of the school?
No, that'd be a weekend or a vacation project.
Okay.
So um, so the wireless network, though that equipment's coming in the summer, we'll be able to do that over the summer and won't be really an issue. Um, you know, there will be a major shutdown for our network switches, we'd never do it in a school day.
Okay, alright.
Paul would butt us.
That's good, that's good to hear. Um, and then I guess I'm I'm sort of curious too about um other other districts for the, you know, the, again, with the same thing that uh Dr. McAuliffe is talking about, the bring your own device versus the district provided. Do we know what other, I mean, is, are most districts district provided?
Most are.
Majority are.
So it's a an occasional um firestorm conversation on the tech director's listserv, let's just say. Um, districts will reach out to me as one of the few districts to bring your own device, because you know, a district that is district provided now, is they're starting to squeeze their budget, they're looking away, says, well, why don't we just go bring your own device? And they'll talk to me about the pluses and minuses and things like that of moving to that kind of a project. Um, there's also a lot of discussion about whether you to uh provide loaners or not, provide chargers or not. Um, there's quite a quite a variety of plans out there, so there is um through Meta, which is the Mass Education Technology Administrative Association. Um, there's a Google Sheet that we all fill out, it kind of categorizes, you know, what to use for your student information system for this, that. So there is a a a survey system already out there that kind of uh takes that into a into account, so.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Uh, David and then Nick.
So echoing, I think, a little bit of what Mr. Turner was saying about um putting more of the forms online. Um, I want to really make a sell for getting the field trip permission form online. Um, because already I think I've filled out that form twenty five, thirty times, like the same form, it's like the same emergency contacts, this.
We already have your name, so.
Yeah, it's like, don't you already have this information, like, I know we can do better. Just kind of make it, it's like, oh, hooray a field trip, oh, wait. Heart starts to sink as I'm having the experience they're getting. Uh, so um, so I just want to put in a specific plug for the field trip uh form, if that can go online somehow and save save information, that would be a great boon. Broadly speaking about like sort of technology and the Chromebook use, um, one thing that I, and this sort of falls again under the general category of, you know, responsible use of technology. Uh, is that I hope that we that we really think. That we really try to think deeply about what is the best use of a Chromebook for educational purposes. And not just sort of think about it, well, you know, they have them, so we should use them for everything, like, why did we do this if not to then take advantage of the technology? Um, because there's, and and Mr. Turner was getting to some of this when talking about like some of the benefits of actually writing things down and um and handwriting. But it's just kind of more broadly that there's a lot of important analog stuff that should be happening in schools and in education. And I I hope that we're thinking deliberately about times to close the laptop screen and just do something completely different. Um, and not just using the Chromebook um always as a kind of a, as a crutch. It's like, this guy again just goes back to this idea of making sure that we're being deliberate and thoughtful and intentional about the way that we use it in the classroom. Kids are spending a lot of time on screens between phones and Chromebooks in school and then having to use their Chromebooks to do their homework uh when they get home. And uh, you know, it's like, that's a challenge that parents have in terms of being deliberate at home and I want to make sure that that we're we're thinking about that in uh in school as well. Uh, I also just want to mention a few things about some of the um challenges of dealing with AI. Uh, one which obviously all educational institutions are dealing with is trying to figure out how to responsibly use these tools. It without basically letting kids just like have AI chatbots write their essays. And uh, this has become, you know, a huge problem in colleges, a lot of them, basically, you can't, no such thing as the at home paper anymore. It's just like you're going to be in the classroom, like writing your papers in front of uh in front of the teacher. And uh, so we're obviously not the only district, basically, this is just something that is uh kind of a universal issue. But um, but we need to be thinking about how do we continue to make sure that our kids are actually learning the skills uh to do these things for themselves. Uh augmented by the appropriate use of technology, you know, we don't let the, you know, we don't let the elementary kids use calculators when they're first learning how to actually, you know, multiply and divide. But at a certain point, we say now it's appropriate uh for you to have this tool to, you know, speed you on your way to more advanced work. And I think we need to think the same way um about AI. And then lastly, um, on the staff side, I think we also need to have very clear policies about how staff are um able to use AI. And what what makes sense for them. Um, because it can obviously be in a lot of ways a big boon, so there could be areas in which AI could lift certain kind of tedious tasks possibly from staff. But you have to be really careful about this, it's well known that uh AIs have a tendency to often hallucinate. Uh, information and just invent facts. And I think we need to be very careful about, you know, some, I would I would be very uncomfortable with someone who kind of just said, create a lesson plan for me, chat GPT. Or, you know, write a series of questions uh at a fourth grade level, uh, you know, based on uh, you know, the whatever book that they're reading there. At least without then, like, if that's a jumping off point, then that's one thing, but if you just say like, alright, I'm done. And uh, you know, give that quiz the next day in class, then then that's a problem and teachers are responsible. But I think we still need to have policies and expectations in place that, you know, nothing can just kind of like go in front of students. That hasn't been completely reviewed by uh human human eyes and uh and completely approved.
Um, one thing, um, almost all of the technology conferences, Krista McAuliffe, Meta conferences, MasQ, they're just peppered with AI courses. And our instructional technology specialists offer courses through uh Wilmington University, a lot of those are about AI. And there's a couple of different flavors of the course, there's the how to manage your student, how to manage it for yourself, authenticity. So there's those those exact same things you're talking about, a lot of lots of discussion and training about that, but that there's multiple needs for that, I should say.
Yeah, well, again, thank you, this is obviously so expansive, there's so much to it and I really appreciate the amount of of time this takes. Um, I think to Mr. Ragsdale's point, that some of this actually does work together, right? Like the sense of, you know, at what age do you introduce these just technologies? If you have a screen in front of you in class, you can maybe access chat GPT to answer your question in class, whereas if you don't, maybe you don't. Um, but but my question is more about the content plans and the subcommittee that's going to be working on the BYOD and the and the Chromebooks. Um, you know, what have you been hearing when those districts are coming to ask you about how BYOD currently works? Do they ask about content management, you know, um, what would they, what's the forefront right now via vis a vis filtering what kids can access?
So it's 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 not, I shouldn't say filtering is the is it's more control.
Okay.
So controlling the distraction, making sure the kids are on the right page, they're not off doing something they want, those are like the secures, those kind of apps, what's they push out. And the concern going to bring your own device is their worry of losing that ability to do that. Because not only in bring your own device, we strongly encourage use of Chromebooks. And we strongly encourage enrolled in our management, so we can use it for MCAS, so the kids can use it for a locked quiz, so we can help buy provide better support, but we can't require that. And we also have a small percentage of students using MacBooks and PC laptops, uh very few iPads we see. And then, of course, the MacBooks, there's built in texting right in there, you know, so that's, you know, some more distraction to that. But we can't require them to do, we can ask them to purchase, we suggest what they do. And anybody who doesn't want to provide one, we provide them a Chromebook. Um, but that that kind of difference between bring your own device and district provided is the crux of that issue.
So just to be clear, so if we did go to a system where we provided Chromebooks to the students, we would have more capacity to limit access to certain.
Absolutely.
Questionable content, okay.
Yes, if we if we bought those types of subscriptions, those are not inexpensive, you know, those subscriptions allow you to manage the Chromebooks. Like in our computer labs, we have a system where the teacher can sit at their desk and look at all the screens in the room. And say, okay, now it's time to shut off, so instead of just, you know, the kids, they can actually control what's on the screen, they can display things. They can, you know, take Johnny's computer and show it to the other kids as examples. Those kinds of things are not possible in a bring your own device where not everybody is managed on everybody's the same device, but district provided, they become more possible.
I can't think of much that's more actually sci fi, I feel like I've seen it in an episode of Star Trek, the teacher puts something on the screen and all the little screens have the same thing, so.
Yes, yes.
That's cool, thank you.
I talked to Bryson. No, you can go and then Mr. Turner had another one.
So thank you, Ken, this is always helpful and well organized. Two questions or thoughts, um Aspen and Google Classroom, so I'm so excited to see that come up. As a parent who has watched this from early elementary through high school, it's a very different experience in high school, I'm sure, as you know, and I guess my, I would urge just to. It's not just enough for one teacher to be looking at their Google, it has to be someone who can see through the eyes of that student who's managing multiple Google classrooms. And that is a huge difference, obviously, as you've stated.
Yeah.
But I don't want to lose sight of, we absolutely have to have someone, it can't just be a teacher from one court, it has to be all of them saying, wait, what does so and so see when they look at there? I mean, I think as a parent, I see all of it and I'm like, whoa, there's, I mean, it's a lot, every notification that comes in. So especially for a student disability or executive functioning, that can be just incredibly, I mean, it's a project in itself.
That's student and parent input.
You do, yeah, I mean, really, because I think it's easy for a teacher to say, no, it's well organized, but one well organized classroom from one teacher looks wildly different from another teacher. And that, for that child to then have to emerge that is a very difficult task. So I'm almost like, I would love for there to be some sort of like root, like system in place where we would really recommend that most of the, I mean, I, we want you to have your autonomy. But at the same time, when we're thinking of one kid navigating seven classes, it would be helpful if they understood that this piece kind of always meant that.
Yeah.
And I have not seen that, it's like classwork can mean this, but it can also mean this and there can be due dates, but there might not be due dates and you gotta go check Aspen and you gotta make sure. So I'm so happy to see that because I'm like, it's one of those inner struggles and you're like, as a parent, you're like, hmm, is it just us, it's just me? But to know that that's something that's being discussed, I think, is very refreshing. So I look forward to hearing what comes from that and that would be my um urge. And the interactive whiteboards, I too love them. And the interactive whiteboards, I too love them. And I would just say, be, just be careful. I think they're, when I'm, I've worked with pre-service teachers who are using them, so I know that they're at the beginning of their careers and learning. And very often they, they do it all and second graders never see the teacher writing, right? And so this idea of like handwriting and guiding them through it, like, they're like, but I did it, and I'm like, okay.
See an elementary teacher sitting next to the easel and writing like this?
Yep.
I can't write like this.
Like, there's something about like the child, right? And I think sometimes when we have those boards, and although we can get up there and write it, there's still the stuff that comes up and it's prepared. But also they tend to struggle with, I did the model with them, but then I shifted. And now that model in the old classroom would still be displayed somewhere. I mean, I encourage them to use chart paper, like, well, if you need it to be up as you are moving through, then you have got to have it on chart paper, because you can't expect them to remember the model from four slides ago, right? And so it's like helping elementary teachers to navigate, and it gets far easier as they get through. But I think at that, at those grade levels where kids are really learning, how do I put those letters together to make words? It can't always be done well. So I think we're all kind of in that same, like, ooh, we need it and we love it, and we want to make sure that teachers are kind of well equipped with, with those tools. So I was really excited to see all that. So thank you. That's awesome. That's all I got.
So two quick follow-ups and I apologize. The, with regard to the bring your own device, the one caveat that comes to mind in terms of the budget and the financial piece is I know some Chromebooks, six, seven-year lifespans, get very great use out of them. I also know some parents who replace their child's Chromebook once, twice a year, because the child regularly slams it shut. And so when we're talking about two-hundred-fifty, three-hundred thousand dollars, that cycle might be pretty quick. And so the, the replacement might not be what we're used to, and so.
Oh, I, from our, almost three hundred loner Chromebooks that we give out, plus all the carts. And I personally replaced a lot of the screens and keyboards. I can, I can attest to the damages and things like that. We, comparing to other districts, we are actually quite low on the incident rate.
Wow.
I hear horror stories from other districts, so.
And then the one thing that Dr., Mr. Ragsdale's point about AI brought to my mind on, on the other pieces, they are, at least in their current iterations, really, really bad with bias. And, and that's one of the things that comes to mind with teachers using them as a tool to help them with their work is what are they bringing in from the, and even the people who write the algorithms don't understand how, fully how the bias is getting into them, which is part of the problem with some of the software. But just the, the idea of if, if it's, if it's the framework or the starting point for something that's going to be done, is it what's appropriate for our students and for the students in general to see coming out the other side of that process? It's a big concern, the bias that's inherent in some of them, and some are better and worse, but that's for sure. Thank you.
Just on that one point about the, the screens and whatnot, I wonder if my, when it's happening at home and there's not a place to bring it, to repair it, then the idea is, oh, it's easier for me to just get a new one. Whereas I wonder if it happens on the loner and we have technology experts right there. That, are they, are they more easily maybe replaced or, or fixed than maybe a parent might think if they're buying these Chromebooks? Does that make sense?
We, I try to advertise at the beginning of every year that we have a help desk at the middle school and high school, it's the first block every morning. We do offer repairs to just about any Chromebook for the cost of the part. There is really one screen that fits like eighty to ninety percent of the Chromebooks, believe it or not. So Brand, Brand's kind of agnostic to that, for the size Chromebooks we get. The touchscreen get much more expensive. But so we replace parts like that. You know, a kid will come in to the help desk with a broken screen. We give them a day loner. I email the parent, hey, would you like us to repair this for the cost of the part? They come back and say, yes. We often repair it the same day and the kid just brings in the check the next morning for the part and off they go. So we try to turn those on very quickly. We can replace screens really quickly. We get so much practice.
Super, super quick, but only just because this just happened to my niece, actually, in Pennsylvania. Is there, like, some way, if you're a family who like can't afford replacing the screen? I don't know how expensive it is, but like.
So it's fifty dollars typically for a screen part. We have had instances where the student, you know, can't afford that and we just kind of waive it.
Okay.
We deal with that kind of thing. So we, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll contact the parent and if I get some hesitation, I can see it in the email. I'll often go talk to the principal, assistant principal and say, hey, is this a family that might be struggling?
Cool, thanks.
And then we do, of course, provide a Chromebook for anyone who can't or does not want to provide one. So we do take care of anybody who doesn't want, we get them a device, so.
Just a quick illustration of the, the variety of longevity, that one of my kids is, is on the third Chromebook in four years. And I have, my other is going into senior year with the original Chromebook from middle school.
They vary, it varies a lot, yes.
Well, I will, I will, go ahead.
Sorry.
Oh, please.
I just, I just wanted to just make one quick comment, thinking about the, the AI and, and bias stuff, which I think is really important, but I think it's also important to acknowledge that those biases can happen in approved curriculums and happen all, all over the place. I just wanted to.
And any web page you pull information from.
I, I will say, just to your comment about the help desk at the middle school, as a parent of a child who uses a loner Chromebook and has utilized the help desk a few times, it, it's a nice resource to have. Clearly a great plan. Thank you to you and your team, to the, the parents, teachers, staff who engage in this work. I suspect you'll be invited back for an update at some point next year.
Especially on the plans as far as we go through these action items.
I mean, we talk about the capital items, certainly when we go through the budget process, but for some of these other things, looking forward, clearly there's some, some great ideas in there, so looking forward to it, Ken. Thank you. All right.
Thanks, thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything you want to add? Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. I, I was just going to point out, you know, two things, the department under Ken's leadership is, is incredible. We are, we are very fortunate. But secondly, this plan is here as a, as a component of the, the strategic plan for the district. I think that's just important to point out, for those that might be watching, sort of wondering, why are we doing this and where's this coming from? This is a commitment that as a district we made as part of our plan to make sure that we are forward-thinking around technology. And, and so this is more than a checkbox, but it's an important part of the strategic plan that's going to guide the future of the district. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that. Thanks, Ken.
And this was intended to be informational, you don't need a vote for approval, right? Thank you, Ken. All right, moving along, we have item D, superintendent contract salary. So we talked about Dr. Brand's evaluation at our last meeting, we talked about it again and approved it at this meeting. Prior to our, our public session, the committee met in executive session to discuss Dr. Brand's salary increase for his contract for next year. And so we have to, we have to vote on it in public as well. So before that, again, thank you for everything you've done over the past year. We're fortunate to have you and look forward to continuing the work you've started, so.
Thank you.
With that, would anybody like to make the motion to approve Dr. Brand's salary increase that was discussed in executive session? Mr. Golden?
I move to approve the salary increase that was discussed in executive session.
Of?
Of three percent.
Thank you. Is there a second, Mr. Turner? Is there any discussion? Dr. McAuliffe?
Yeah, so just one thing I wanted to highlight was, it kind of ties into the evaluation where, you know, we all agreed as a committee, Dr. Brand is performing at a really high level, so we all felt it was very justified for this increase.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Brand.
Thank you.
All right, we've got first read of some policies. I know the policy subcommittee met, I apologize. I, as a member of the policy subcommittee, I don't know, David, Jen, do you guys want to take a?
I'm still a little confused, David, I'm kidding. Look, I'm going, what did we do here? No, of course we will take you through. Yes, okay.
So let's see, so the first one is the parental notification relative to sex education. And this, I know the comment says that this policy is not listed in the handbook. It actually is listed in the handbook, but under a different name. So that's why there's just a change from the IHAM one to A for it to fit with the MAS C policy. But otherwise, that just has an added legal reference at the bottom and the review date.
And then the first one in your packet, I, I have IHAMR, which is the health education.
Yeah, it looks like they're flipped, flipped on the agenda as they are in the packet.
That's, oh, no, it's okay.
That's okay. Okay, questions, comments, concerns?
So is this the, I know you mentioned you found it in the MAS C. Is the same in the MAS C or is it different?
It's the same.
Okay.
This matches, yes, this matches.
Really what we're mostly doing is trying to go through it and make sure that we're aligned with any updates they've made, made over the years. Because often we're a few years behind, so.
And, and this is a requirement of mass general law, that parents have the right to exempt their students from sex education.
Great, thank you.
I'll keep moving through. There aren't, and if there aren't any, if you want me to stop, we'll stop, otherwise we'll just keep going. You can see in blue, we've just added some sources. Not much else has changed on IHAMB. IHB, again, you see the track changes there. IHBA. So there's some more substantial editing here. You can see we just sort of deleted the bottom there and rewrote right from the MAS C handbook up on top. It's also retitled Student Services Program. That brings us to IHBD. This matches, we just added the references. Good?
Good, keep going, you're good.
I'm scanning to make sure I'm not skipping over anything. IHBF. So I'm just looking at my comment here. And I believe we were questioning, sorry, Dr. Brand, I don't want to put you on the spot here. So we rewrote it pretty much to mimic MAS C. And then we had a question here on district to identify appropriate administrator. And we were going to. Dr. Brand, are you with me or no?
I am, just a second.
Sorry.
No, I'm.
So this is, this is a policy about students who, for generally medical reasons, have to be out of school for longer than two weeks and that the school can, you know, can arrange a program of instruction for the student while they're at home or in the hospital.
And so we had one note here, just to check on who is the appropriate administrator.
Yeah, the policy says that the statement needs to be sent to the building principal. So this is the stu, this is basically the family sends a note to the principal, but there is essentially a note that the district can designate someone else if they want, other than the principal.
We, it is the prin, that, that's appropriate to leave as a principal.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sorry about that. IHBH. Track changes and we are recommending, David, remind me here on this top part, were we removing this or keeping it?
So in the top part, well, this is something I think we wanted to bring to the committee.
Yeah.
The, so the MAS C version does not have this introductory paragraph. And I think I'm inclined to delete it. Some of our policies have these introductory statements of, sometimes they're aspirational statements. There's statements of kind of, you know, vision or of, of value that's being served, and then you kind of get to the policy itself. I think in this case, it's, I mean, broadly speaking, I think policies are better if they're shorter. That if something doesn't need to be there, then it's easier for everyone to read it, to interpret it and work with it if it's shorter. So I think, given that MAS C does not have that introductory paragraph and that the policy would work perfectly fine to just start with, the school committee will provide alternative education programs, I would recommend deleting it.
And we, David, and, and it's going back a bit here, but I think we added for students, which probably should say who require, not that, a special focus on life skills and vocational training, because we were trying, we wanted to make sure that we included the vocational piece. And if we remove that top paragraph, it would have been removed, right? So we added that in there to sort of take the place of what we thought was most important in that first paragraph. But I immediately didn't like the first sentence. I was like, this is odd.
It's mentioned again, the vocational training is mentioned again in the third paragraph. But we, we kind of thought like, well, is there anything important in paragraph one that we can capture and put into the second paragraph and then otherwise delete it?
Okay, so, so essentially for this policy, we would be deleting the first paragraph and including these additions in the second and third paragraphs?
Yes, exactly.
Like?
Yeah, I had a question on this one. It was, if you look in the second paragraph, it said how the school committee will provide alternative education programs. That would be more the district than us as the committee, right, to do that?
Yeah, that's something that you're going to also find kind of inconsistently as a style matter in the policies, that there are some policies that just talk about sort of the school committee will provide, because ultimately it's the school committee providing it as the, the highest governing authority in the district. When you could just as easily say the district will provide and many, many policies do. I mean, I think I prefer the district
Yeah.
as a, a more natural reading of it, so I would be fine with making that change.
Yeah, okay.
Fine.
Okay, thanks.
And there is a typo, program. Is that the one you wanted? Yeah. I just can't seem to fix it on here. So, okay, so we'll change the school committee, sorry, I'll pull back, I, I don't have editing access on this one, but I will pull back in. So school committee will replace with district and then program is not spelled correctly. And I think that's it. All right, so I'll go in, Tracy, and just fix that one up.
Are, are, I'm just looking at the, the top of it where the, the policy was updated. It contains the following note, in the school committee's policy manual is often blah, 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 blah. I don't understand. Was that, is that going to be added to it?
No.
I don't think that's necessary. I just wanted to note that that was something that was listed in MAS C for our discussion, but.
We don't ever want to, we don't ever just not, if it's there, we want to show it to you to make sure you're okay with us taking it out.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know, I didn't know if it went which way or the other. Okay.
All right, so we're good with that one with the suggested changes, okay.
IHCA.
So the, most of this is just a little bit of editing, just kind of tightening, tightening things up a little bit. There was also one last highlighted line, all summer programs will be subject to annual approval by the school committee. I recommend that we delete that sentence. One, because it is not something we are currently doing. You may have noticed that we never actually approve the existence of summer school each year. And it's also not required, so there, there's nothing in, in the law that requires approval of the programs. So I think we should just delete the sentence.
That makes sense? Okay.
IJ instructional materials, small edits.
I just had one minor, yeah. Perfectionist, the font's different with the bullet points than the top paragraph.
I think that gets fixed.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Yeah, Tracy makes all that look nice.
All right, sounds good.
You're sir, are a man after my heart.
Okay, and so this next one is a suggested removal. And we have a note here.
So this is, so this is connected to the, basically the opt-out for sex education, so the policy that we looked at earlier. And it's simply a sample communication. And the, the reason that we're recommending removal is that it's not really a policy. It's just sort of a part of the procedure of how the policy is implemented. And that there are many parts of our policies that discuss communications that need to take place between the district and the school. But we don't include sample correspondence in the policy manual itself. So we think there's, this is a perfectly fine sample letter, but that this is the type of thing that should be essentially kept at the local level within the schools as possible samples and doesn't need to be in policy manual itself.
Is that okay?
Reasonable?
Great.
Good, okay.
And then our second removal is IHBHB, I can see it better on there, magnet schools. This is not in the MAS C policy manual and doesn't really apply to us, so we were suggesting removal of this.
So magnet schools are generally specific to particular educational focuses, like a focus. So there might be a performing arts magnet school, a STEM magnet school, a mathematics magnet school. There aren't that many of them in Massachusetts. Boston has some and Worcester has a couple and so forth, but we don't have any. And it just didn't seem relevant and is not in the MAS C policy, David.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that, everyone? Okay, great, so we'll bring those back for a second read and then I just have to go back in and tidy up IHB. I don't know whose that was, but I can go back in and fix that.
Okay.
You missed quite a meeting, see? We were going to cancel because you weren't there, but then we just.
No, you weren't.
No, you weren't.
We moved ahead, it was fine.
All right, so we will bring those back.
For a second read, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports?
I think we just gave ours.
Want me to go through the policies?
I think we should read them again.
Last week, we reviewed.
Yeah, yeah. Correspondence?
None this evening.
All right. Before we get to future school committee dates and other notable items, just one or two notes from me. Being that it's more or less our last regular meeting of the year, thank you to all of you for all the work you've done this past school year. Nick jumped right in, we appreciate that. A thank you to MJ, who is not with us anymore, but started the year with us. I want to extend a very happy early birthday to Dr. Bryson. Don't think I forgot, she's celebrating her birthday tomorrow. She did say we could sing to her if we wanted to, so.
Probably unnecessary.
I think we should.
I'm just happy, I'm just happy for the shout out. Thank you very much.
All right.
Love birthdays. Feel free to shower me on Facebook tomorrow. I love lots of messages, so, a big, big birthday proponent.
Well, we're glad you were able to share the day before your birthday with us.
Sometimes it's been the day of. I mean, that's really special.
I can only imagine.
And I expect balloons and cupcakes, but because it's the day before, I'll let it go.
Future school committee dates, July 8th, the school committee retreat will be in this building in the library, starting at 9:00 AM. July 23rd, the Wildwood School Building Committee is meeting at 6:30 PM virtually. August 7th, the Wildwood MSBA Community Forum at 7:00 PM virtually. August 17th, Backpack School Supply Giveaway from 10 to 12 in the lobby here at the high school. That information, I think, is on the district's website as well.
It is at this point.
Right?
Website, newsletter.
And newsletters.
They're pushed out again as a reminder early August.
Perfect. Not to get ahead of ourselves, of course, August 28th will be the first day of the 2024, 2025 school year for grades one through 12. And September 4th, 2024 is the first grade, first day of the 2024, 2025, excuse me, school year for our pre-K and kindergarten students. With that, one last time for the school year, is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gold, second. Mr. Samaha, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good summer.